Good afternoon, everyone. Calling to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for the Town of Hingham for January 29, 2019. First item of business, approval of the minutes. A move to accept the minutes of January 22, 2019, is written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment, hearing none. We'll get right to the Audit Committee. Chair of the Audit Committee, please join us at the table. Sue. Welcome. Which seat is it? This one you have to pick, my man.
Thanks.
Appreciate if you could just introduce yourselves and who's present, and the floor would be yours.
Thank you. I'm Mike Dwyer, I'm Chair of the Audit Committee.
Chris Rogers, I'm the Managing Principal, Clifton Larson Allen, of our state and local government practice.
Welcome.
Sue Nickerson, Town Accountant.
And may I introduce one of the members of our committee, Rob Schickel.
Hi, Rob, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Floor is yours.
Well, thank you. In the interest of time, this two-page summary, which I believe you all possess, if not, I have copies. Everyone have one of these?
May I have an extra copy, Mike?
Sure.
I had it, and I read it, but it's...
Sure.
It's been out there in my folder. I managed to refile it. Thank you. Thank you.
So, really, this is a, you know, summary upon summary upon summary here. And so, let's just tick through this as sort of a checklist to make sure we don't overlook anything, please. And I feel very lucky and fortunate to be supported by such technical expertise in accountants here. So, really, straight to business. First, there's three streams of reporting information. CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the Management Letter, and the Single Audit Report. The Single Audit Report is really beamed at the feds. And, you know, you've seen this each year. It's production, I think, is fairly well-understood. This year, I want to get right to the key findings, if I may. So, what's happening is, we're actually seeing a notable event here, a material weakness. And please let me position this as a citizen, as a non-CPA. This is not a burning house, or, you know, malfeasance, or missing money, or anything like that. What this is, is a technicality in supporting documentation around a SPED grant. And what happens is, these grants are sampled by the auditors. The largest one is SPED, and there's this concept of an allowable cost that says, you know, you might have a grant for equipment and training, or whatever else. It has to match in type, it has to match in date, and it has to be, you know, complete or supportive. So, in this case, when they did a test of something on the order of 40 timesheets, I think it was...
Correct. Yes, there was... There was an error rate. We took a sample of 40, and there was an error rate of 38 out of 40, where the documentation didn't support the charge to the grant. So, the known question costs, at any time you don't have appropriate documentation, it's considered a question cost. It doesn't mean that anybody's coming back to get the money, but we're questioning it because it's not supported. But probably the more important thing is that we only sampled 40, so what we have to do is sort of extrapolate. If we were to sample the entire population, what does that dollar amount look like? And if it gets to a point that is material to the program, and in this case, if I'm not mistaken, the materiality related to SPED was in the neighborhood of $70,000, well, those question costs would have exceeded the $70,000. So, in that case, we had to modify our opinion on that program for that specific compliance requirement.
So, again, being a citizen, what has to happen? They have to respond. They have to respond credibly that says, you know, "Oh, here's why this happened, here's what we propose to do." I mean, hopefully, you have a sense of this audit wheel turning, that there's findings, we react, oh, we learn, we correct, and that's really the big item for this year. Shall we keep going through our report here?
Please.
You're in the interest of time. There were a lot of things that happened this year, but I know I've done some reporting, or the committee has done some reporting through me, to Mary Power as our liaison.
Thank you.
Has any of that been shared in any way?
So, typically, what the process, Mike, is that as the Selectmen liaison to the Audit Committee, and I appreciate the correspondence we've had during the year, so typically, what I do is I share that with Mr. Mayo, and then he keeps Selectmen Johnson and Selectmen Healy apprised. And that's kind of how, you know, so Tom's very important role is making sure that the information flow occurs. So, you know, early in the year, when you raised questions about minutes, and, you know, the question of the item with respect to SREP, that's been socialized throughout the board. And then typically, the just, you know, the process for the benefit of the public to close the loop is that if on any of these items, you know, any of us have any questions or concerns, we circulate those through the Town Administrator. And then, to the extent that Tom feels like, hey, everybody's asking the same questions, that's when something gets on an agenda, or the like. I think, I appreciate the fact that not only, you know, it seems to be both very comprehensive, I also kind of appreciate during the year, the kind of updates, because we only have the opportunity to see you in person once a year, but it's helpful to hear kind of during the year.
The only thing I would add to that is, throughout the process, Mike, when I hear from you, or I hear from Mary, that you've spoken with her, I also speak very, work very closely with Sue.
Absolutely.
With Sue Nickerson. So, she and I are constantly reviewing the issues that your board is devising and talking about, but also, what we hear from Chris and his team, and then we come up with our management responses, you know, in devise play approaches to make sure that we're covering ourselves.
Yep, and I would say, and just to sort of close the loop on that, I mean, we really rely on Tom, but mostly on Sue, to say, hey, as, you know, as we identify potential areas of concern or exposure for the town, you know, as a Board of Selectmen, we're really policymakers. And, you know, I happen to have a finance background, but you don't always have a board that does. So, we really rely on the expertise of Tom and Sue to say, okay, how do we address this policy issue? And that's really where our professional staff plays a really important role.
Thanks for the briefing. That means we can just touch on these then. Great, thank you, which is even better. So, really, one small piece of news is that the town asked for a 30-day extension in the review of the CAFR from the Government Financial Officers Association, GFOA. And that's for the three reasons listed. Really had turnover in retirement, and unfortunately, that's a firing sequence that says, you know, retirement produces numbers, they go to actuaries, they go to auditors, they get packaged in. And if the front step is delayed in any way, which happened here. Second thing is, I consult in public pension myself, and these GASB promulgations are a big deal. I mean, I watch other boards and entities struggle with trying to true this all up. And, you know, spreading across a couple of items here regarding this GASB 75, the fact that the town's on a fiscal reporting year, and several of the other entities are, but the municipal light plant, because of its commercial and regulatory nature, is on a calendar year, will forever introduce a stress or tension on truing up these, you know, pension and OPEB. This year, we had the double luck that they hadn't yet had to move to the latest promulgation. Anything you want to add to that, Chris?
Well, GASB 75, which is the, is the full accounting of your other post-employment, retirement, health insurance liability. I guess the biggest thing I would say, other than it added probably eight pages of notes, made the document a little bit bigger and harder to read, what it did was add $53 billion to your liability. Now, when you look at your unrestricted, if you go to your full accrual statement, and you look at your unrestricted, it's going to be in the negative, but there's a reason, and it has to do with the OPEB and the pension liabilities. And it's, you're not abnormal. Every other government in the country is dealing with this.
Yep. And I would just say, for the benefit of the public, that Hingham was the first municipality in the entire Commonwealth back in 2008 to begin regularly funding our other post-employment benefit, which is our healthcare obligation to retirees. Over the last 11 years, we've accumulated $12 million in that OPEB trust fund, and one of the reasons that compelled us to do that is that several years ago, we understood that this disclosure requirement, GASB 75, is coming, and we understood that all municipalities and all, you know, all government entities was going to have to start reporting that pension liability on their balance sheet. We're funding OPEB because it's the right thing to do, but also, I would say that because of the efforts taken by the town over the last 11 years, we are better positioned than many municipalities. And, in fact, as we go through the credit rating process, one of the reasons that we've maintained our AAA credit rating with all three agencies is because we are on an OPEB 30-year funding schedule, and every year, we stick to that. So, we knew that this $53 million liability was coming onto our balance sheet. We understood the reporting requirements, and we continue to work towards making sure that we can honor the commitment that we make to the men and women that work for this town.
Great. So, I think this is coming together like I had hoped. I feel like we're understanding each other, and I appreciate the background that you'd already shared some of this. Let's tick off a couple more things on our list. Well, I don't want to skip by. Number one, we have new auditors. The committee senses that CLA has done a great job, looked a little harder, dug a little deeper, and one of our members, who's a municipal CPA herself, stood up from a meeting and said, "Make sure you change auditors every five or 10 years." You know, that it's not a bad thing to keep in mind. So, there's a challenge for you, for CLA.
A lot of those challenges.
But it's a real sense of confidence that a lot of important things have been uncovered. Notably, item number three, which is seemingly moving into the rearview mirror, which is, as the mortgage payments completed around housing, we should have changed from informing mass housing to the feds, or HUD. We didn't. It's since been corrected, and every month that goes by with our protest from HUD, there's, fair to say, a growing sense of relief, or is that fair?
Further in the cliff.
Rearview mirror, yeah.
Right.
And this is respect to the Housing Authority.
Correct.
Thank you.
Lincoln School Apartments.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, not your trust, right, the actual apartments, right. Regarding SREP, I mean, the news is, there's still things to work out, but it's getting put together. First of all, recently, as I understand, the chairman's agreed that Hingham will not need to participate in the repayment to Hingham money that was just literally put in the wrong bucket, you know, somewhere back there. That's good. Second thing is, we understand SREP is looking for an audit. We understand that from what you hear through Town Administrator. We also hear from the firm that they've been approached. That's a good thing. I think once that, once SREP is on a regular audit, I think some, I think a lot of concerns will just follow.
And just a follow-up question. When you, when you, if SREP were to begin auditing, are you going to recommend that SREP go back in time and audit the financial statements beginning in their first year of operation, or just on a go-forward basis?
Well, we've been taught by our auditors that there's really an option there of starting from inception, or even if you were to start from current year, you'd have to do a deeper dive into beginning balances.
Yes.
So, that's a bit of a, you know...
Yes, the Town Administrator is asking me to put together a proposal with both of those options in there of one-year financial statement, understanding that we're going to have to do some work around the beginning balance to see if we can express, you know, a clean opinion on the statement, and also one that takes us back to the beginning of time for SREP.
Okay, thank you.
And I promised Town Administrator you would have that in the next couple of weeks, so...
So, just to make sure everybody's understanding, the way this works is, Hingham is 1/4 of SREP. So, while I very much appreciate the Audit Committee and our auditors' opinions on how to move forward on this, there's a governing board that will decide that, of which I'm a component. So, I take all this stuff very seriously. I bring it back to them. We have thoughtful conversations on them, and then a decision will be forthcoming.
Or one vote.
Yep.
One thing, though, one small technicality for the Selectmen to understand about the, about SREP, is that their inter-municipal agreement, their fundamental IMAs, as it's called, does call for an annual audit.
Yep.
So, that's baked in. It's not like this is a recommendation, it's a note.
That's the good news. I would imagine that in the other communities, you're carrying your SREP budget as a line item, and as you get into the budget process, you know, just like here in Hingham, when we budget our money, we don't have sort of available funds, nor do we have the ability. You know, in municipal budgets, you can't move money from one bucket to another. That all has to be done in a public process, reviewed by the Advisory Committee, which is a good thing. So, I imagine that for the other communities, that is going to represent an incremental cost that will have to be factored in their budget process. And again, I think similar to our budget process, there's, you know, an Advisory Committee and a governing body, so we may, I guess my point is, and I support the idea of auditing, I'm glad it's in the IMA, it may take a bit of time to get to that place, hopefully not too long, because I think it's a decision that goes beyond the people sitting at this table.
Right, fair enough.
Now, there's one thing, are there any other questions about this report at this time? I'd like to point out that CLA put together a presentation, and unfortunately, this is not a presentation format, but I asked that enough copies be provided so that we could distribute this to you folks, Town Administrator, Assistant, Selectmen. And the reason is that this is what I think, if you need to summarize, what did they say? What had to be fixed? What were the major financial points? This is really what you'd want to use. So, I think there's five copies.
And I think we received this electronically earlier this afternoon. Thank you, Sue.
All right. But I really would, you know, the committee reviewed a version of this, very close to this, recently, and I think it's a good vehicle. Three months or six months from now, if you need to think, what was that about audit I wanted to follow up or think about? You don't need to go sifting through the single audit or the CAFR of this, that this is really the highlights of the...
Thank you. I also appreciate reading the Management Letter. I just, I like the structure of it. It's, you know, I, you know, in terms of, hey, here's the finding, here are the recommendations. I would also just point out to the public that, you know, it's always, it's always nice to see that, you know, we are in a, in the corporate world, we used to call it generally well-controlled, which was, which is a good place to be. Having said that, as municipal laws change, as GASB requirements change, as our business gets more complex, as we move to technology, and we know that cybersecurity is an issue for everybody, we also have to look and see if the controls that were in place a couple of years ago may not be sufficient any longer, so it's helpful to just continue to see that. I don't view that as an indication of management, rather, I say the fact that we're having the audit done every year says, we want to know that we're on top of this stuff, and we want to know, as things change, whether we need to, you know, further, you know, further solidify, or, you know, shore anything up.
Right. And I would just like to let Mike know how much I appreciate their efforts from my chair in this office. It's really comforting to have, quite frankly, a new auditor, not that the old auditor was doing anything insufficient or otherwise, but fresh set of eyes to look at the operation. It's always good to know that what you can be doing better, and then finding ways to fix those things. If we don't know that something isn't happening that could be done better, then we don't fix it. So, these reports are very helpful. Sue has already implemented changes on all of these issues, and with the two of us, in different capacities, different items. And Chris, thank you very much for you and your organization's work to date. It's been a pleasure to work with you guys.
Great, thank you.
And our thanks to the Audit Committee for the process of putting together an RFP, vetting different proposals, and choosing a partner for the town. You chose very well. We appreciate that.
Gentlemen and ladies, appreciate the presentation.
One, appreciate that. There's one administrative thing I want to highlight, I want to point out, is that we do have a goal we'd like to achieve today, which is to make sure that the CAFR goes on its way to GFOA, say about 9:01 tomorrow morning, you know, which I understand can happen electronically, so I just want to...
That's why we're doing this tonight.
So, do we need a vote tonight? Is that what we need to do to make that happen?
Please.
Not on? Is that not on the proposal list?
I will make a motion to accept the financial statements as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Mike, could you just, before you leave, could you mention the names of the other members of the Audit Committee?
Sure.
I know others are not here.
Rob Schickel's here, he's the Secretary. We also have Leonetta, I can't think of Les Capini, and Doug Farrington, and Joshua Marine. A very interesting group. We have two CPAs, you know, business and tech executives, it's really a good group.
Of course it is. Sing them.
Please pass along, please pass along our thanks, and again, I appreciate the communication during the year, so I'll look forward to that as we go on.
Well, I'm going to be stepping down. This is my fourth year in the audit. I had set out to do one three-year term, but if you just threw, if you just spun the bottle, you'd get a good chairman. So, you know, I stuck around for an extra year just to see all this through.
Thank you.
And, you know, to make sure we're okay on year one of this. I can't wait to see who gets picked. It'll be interesting.
Thank you for your volunteerism to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item I CBITB. The town raises appropriated transfer from available funds to sum the money to be used to install fiber optic in municipal area network. Redundancy in and between all town buildings, or any act, or anything related to it. There we go.
So, I asked Steve Becker, our IT Director, to come in and give a very brief overview of the issue before us, and if you have questions, we can certainly tackle them. Steve?
All right. Quick overview, the fiber infrastructure that we have in town that connects all the buildings is provided by Comcast as part of their original Comcast cable contract. The contract is expiring this August, and it's anticipated, based on the precedent set in other municipalities, that Comcast is going to be discontinuing to allow us to use that fiber. It's anticipated they're going to pull that infrastructure back to their own, and which we would then need to provide our own fiber infrastructure. As a result of this move, we would need to replace that fiber based on that all of our data and telephone communications run across that fiber. So, the anticipated cost to replace the fiber, well, including some redundancy in there, currently, we don't have any redundancy built into it, but the anticipated cost is in the $450,000 to $500,000 range.
And we wouldn't want to wait until August, because if Comcast follows the practice as in the other communities, that would like wipe out our reserve fund.
Well, so we would end up...
Beginning of the fiscal year.
Yeah, we would end up, so we're working with our attorney on this right now, trying to negotiate a transition phase between our fiber and their network, and what that transition will look like is still a little bit up in the air. He's actively negotiating that now. So, this is a necessity, long-term. This is a, this article, though, is, would allow us to be prepared, depending on how those negotiations go.
Do we think it's at all possible that Comcast could not discontinue? Or are we, as we're looking, if they're doing this in other communities, is it only a matter of time before this happens in Hingham?
So, they want us off their, off their...
Okay.
Whether or not we're able to negotiate a year or two to stay on while we build our own network is kind of the question. How long does that take? What are the costs of that? Where does it become financially unfeasible to continue on their network while we build ours? So, again, the sooner we can get this done, the quicker we can get off their network where they don't want us.
Yeah. So, I'm just thinking about the financial piece of this, I mean, the business case is very clear, and I like the idea of being prepared and having a smooth transition so that there isn't any disruption. I guess, and this is probably a question for Tom and Michelle and Sue, kind of offline, is, with something like this, do we typically fund this, you know, do we pay cash for it, or do we amortize it over a period of years, given that the, you know, given that the fiber optic has, you know, you know, a longer useful life? So, I don't have an issue with the business case. I'm thinking more about the, how do we pay for it?
Going to do it, right.
And...
To be determined.
Yep.
But it will be determined in the near term.
Yes. And I think, right now, we're just voting on the business case for it.
This has to be done, right?
Yeah.
Is whatever goes in, is it going to have that new technology that I'm hearing about over the radio waves, 5G?
5G's more on the cellular side. This is going to be, basically, the data's just going to be going across the fiber. There's no, you know, cellular or radio or anything involved with it.
Think of this as a physical connection wires, but it's fiber connection, so the capacity of these, of this network, the style of this network type is virtually unlimited.
Do they physically remove all this stuff?
That's been a question that I've put to the Cable Committee, and...
What's it worth to that?
Perhaps to some places, but they might repurpose it, the bandwidth, the capacity within the lines.
I was almost hoping that, you know, just transferring ownership to the town would almost make sense, but I'm not sure what's behind their decision-making.
Would this give us the authority to make them an offer on the system that's in place at...
So, we would have to evaluate what their system is, whether it's something that we want, whether we can grow into it, if it's capacity-wise is sufficient for our needs. There's a lot of engineering questions that would go into that.
Yep.
So, would it be fair to say that the appropriation of $400,000 would be if the town were to install it, but if we were to be successful in negotiating or repurposing, it would just bring that amount down?
Yeah, I wouldn't be interested in buying old product at a higher rate than what it would cost us to put in new fiber for ourselves. So, I think that's a safe statement. I haven't seen any estimates.
So, this is kind of a not to exceed, and, yeah.
That.
Okay.
I'm willing to, we recommend favorable action on Article W.
Second. Aye.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
The town of Florence, Michelle? Anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Thomas?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
Briefly, I want to extend our thanks to Diane DiNapoli and the Hingham Community Center for the supper that was put on Sunday, for the, last Sunday, for the furlough federal workers. The vote and the shutdown took place Friday, but yet, the event went forward anyhow in a show of solidarity. Selectwoman Constable from the Town Hall was there, Senator O'Connor, Representative Machino, and Bob Vogt from Congressman Lynch's office were there. So, obviously, the importance that was attached to it was obvious, so thanks very much for doing that. That was, I thought, a really fine gesture, well-appreciated. So, on that, I'll take a motion to adjourn, and we'll see you shortly.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Night, everyone.